Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Township Council for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel thirty-four and is streaming live on Montclair TV thirty-four and TV thirty-four YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can and will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting schedule set forth in Resolution R. twenty-one-two-ten adopted by the council at its conference meeting November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, advertised in the official newspaper on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, posted on the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted. In addition, a copy of this has been available in Township Clerk and is on file. All right, with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Cummings.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurla.
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Present.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegler.
Here.
Counselor Yakovales.
Present.
Mayor Spiller.
Present. We'll move the agenda with flexibility. Next, we've got a couple of proclamations. Can I ask Counselwoman Price Abrams to do the first?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege. I will. I will. I'm going to invite Trina Paulus if you would join me at the lectern. And I brought a copy of the fiftieth anniversary, fiftieth anniversary edition of Hope for the Flowers. Let's see. I guess I need to be by the mic. So why don't we stand so I can do this. Proclamation honoring Trina Paulus. Whereas esteemed Township resident Trina Paulus, following a journey of personal self-discovery and dedicated service to others, authored and illustrated Hope for the Flowers, a timeless story of resilience and transformation that has transcended boundaries and touched countless lives. And whereas Hope for the Flowers has just marked its fiftieth anniversary since original publication and has been translated into Spanish, Dutch, German, Brazilian, Portuguese, Russian, Korean, Chinese, Japanese, Kurdish, Thai, Hebrew, Arabic, Farsi, French, Turkish, and Swahili, opening pathways for hope in far corners of the world. And whereas known as the butterfly lady of Montclair, Trina Paulus has raised thousands of monarchs to increase the population of this vital pollinator species, and she has earned considerable acclaim as a sculptor, organic gardener, and as a peace and environmental activist. And whereas Trina Paulus has given generously of her time and energy as vice president of the Cornucopia Network of New Jersey and as an active member of the Board for the Northeast Earth Coalition and of other national organizations dedicated to sustainability for the planet and all living beings. And whereas, in every aspect of her life and work, Trina Paulus has demonstrated an exemplary measure of public spiritedness and in so doing provided an example of good and responsible citizenship worthy of emulation. And whereas, oh, no, and now therefore, the mayor and counsel of the Township of Montclair wish to recognize Trina Paulus upon the fiftieth anniversary of her classic book, Hope for the Flowers, and do hereby extend sincere gratitude and appreciation for her contributions to our community and to the broader world. Thank you. Love you. I've been, I feel like this is the only town I've ever really assimilated to. And in my eighties, I was very active politically here with tax reform and evaluations. We got the Chamber of Commerce award, some things like this. But I was not known as a writer or an artist here. I was a hockey mom, and I raised my son here because I wanted to be in a mixed community. And we certainly were in the South End where I live at that time. Montclair is gentrifying, for me, too much right now, and I just really miss that mixed racial aspect that was so special for me when I came here. And so I hope that we can retain that and housing for the poor and housing for people in a town as wealthy as we are. So I'm very grateful for this honor, to be recognized as part of this community. And what else can you say? It's not very often that something has transcended so many boundaries, and that's what it's about. It's not political, it's not right and left, but it's about the revolution of the heart. That's the core of everything. And unless we have that revolution by lots of caterpillars who decide to become butterflies and carry the love of one flower to another, we're not going to have peace or a revolution that stays. And then not sure we're going to sustain life because of the way that the climate is changing and everything else and war and all that kind of stuff. So that's where I want to stand and put my life and my last years. I'm ninety-one now, and I want to keep going as long as I can, and I'd like to stay in Montclair. Okay, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Well said. Counsel, counsel. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone here for the National Injury Prevention Day proclamation? Oh, excellent. I'm coming right down.
Michelle.
Hey, Michelle. Melissa, she told me the name. I swear I didn't get it wrong.
Very impressive.
So I have a proclamation here, which is for declaring the eighteenth of November to be National Injury Prevention Day. Whereas National Injury Prevention Day is designed to raise awareness about the burden of injury and violence and the need for change, it is dedicated to educating and empowering communities to make a difference in reducing injuries and deaths. And whereas injuries affect everyone and are a leading cause of disabilities for people of all ages regardless of sex, race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status, injuries are the leading cause of death and disability to U.S. children ages one to eighteen. And whereas it is equally important to foster resiliency and address inequities leading to injury and violence so that all people have safe and nurturing relationships, are connected to family, peers, and community members, and have access to the basic resources necessary to thrive. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, gun violence is the leading cause of death for children in the United States, more than eighteen-hundred children under the age of eighteen are killed with guns every year. And whereas, an estimated fifty-four percent of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely, and an estimated four-point-six million children live in a home with at least one unlocked. And whereas, almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the U.S., research shows that the best way to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. And whereas hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting safe practices. And whereas the Township of Montclair is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of our children, the mayor and council's highest responsibility is protecting public safety in the community they serve. And whereas National Injury Prevention Day raises awareness and promotes efforts to reduce injuries among children, the Township of Montclair commends Be Smart, a program developed by the Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund and Moms Demand Action and all involved in their endeavor to protect children from injury. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair do hereby proclaim the eighteenth of November to be National Injury Prevention Day. I so move with my colleagues. And I'd like to present you with this, and please say something.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Hello, everyone, back again. My name is Lorraine Lombardi, and I am the lead volunteer here in New Jersey for Be Smart for Kids. And we want to thank you for doing this and particularly to thank you for your support of our efforts to protect children from gun violence. Now, as the proclamation says, guns are the leading cause of death for children in the U.S. It's not motor vehicles, it's not poisoning, it's not childhood cancer, it's a bullet from a gun, and we can prevent that. Almost every single day, a child in the U.S. accesses a loaded gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else. The deaths make up about five percent of all child gun deaths, and they represent a real public health crisis here in the United States. So some statistics, so far this year, there have been two-hundred-thirty-eight reported child shootings that have resulted in a hundred-and-six deaths and a hundred-forty-five injuries. Unintentional shooting incidents, their highest in July, and then now around the holiday season between November and December. They're most likely to happen on the weekend, Friday to Sunday, with most of the shootings occurring on Saturday. Seven in ten of unintentional shootings occur in homes, in the home of the shooter, the victim, or a friend or relative's home where they access the gun. And the age range of victims of unintentional child shootings between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty range from a one-month-old baby to a seventy-seven-year-old man. However, these shootings are most often shootings of children by children. The age groups most likely to be affected are teenagers, fourteen to seventeen, followed by preschoolers, five and under, which dispels the myth that people say that young children can't pull the trigger on a gun. They can't. And it's not just the child who is injured or killed who's affected by this. It's their parents, their siblings, their families, the community, teachers, healthcare workers. But data shows that secure gun storage is the indisputable ingredient to avert these incidents, and they occur at times and in places where kids are just being kids, at home, at school, when they're all playing. And Be Smart, we have five steps to help prevent this, and that's, the word SMART is an acronym. Secure your guns in homes and vehicles. And just a simple cable lock like this on a gun can save a life. You want to unload the gun, lock the gun, and unload it, lock it, and store it separate from ammunition. And there are all other various kinds of storage. One of the best things a police officer told us at an event we did just a short while ago was a biometric safe. You just press a button, the safe opens, and you can access your gun if that's what you're concerned about. So it's secure your weapons, model responsible behavior about guns around your children and other adults. A is ask about the presence of guns in homes, other homes that your child goes to. That's so important. You would, if you had a child, you would ask if they had a pet, if your child was allergic to cats, or if they went to a pool, if a house that has a pool is the pool fenced in. You should ask about the presence of guns, and it's a very simple thing to do. You can just do it by on text or voicemail. And then the R is to recognize the role of guns in suicide. Child suicide is the, has the highest increase of any age group in the country over the last couple of decades, which, when I learned that, that just really upset me. And then the last one is tell, which is what we're doing here. Tell, tell everybody to be smart. Just lock your gun. If you have a gun, just lock it up. And some people will say, well, I don't have a gun, I don't have to worry about this. Well, right, it may not be your gun, but it could be your child who either is injured or, heaven forbid, who is killed by a gun that is, has been accessed by another child. So thank you very much. We have some packets for all of you with some information in there and our pods here, and I have some extra ones that you can leave around the municipal building if you want. Should we pass these out to everybody or just give them?
Give them to the clerk.
To the clerk, okay. Thank you, thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if I could just mention one other thing, we were speaking to the police officers up here, and back in, in August, Colonel Pat Callahan, the superintendent of the State Police, he put our Be Smart information on his website and on all his social media accounts and sent all of that information on to all law enforcement agencies in the state. So everybody together is telling everybody to be smart. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask Chief Conforty to come on up and to speak about the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs Police regarding the police department reaccreditation. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Chief Delgado is going to go over the process a little bit, and if it's okay, I'm going to say a few words afterwards.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. It is indeed my honor here tonight to come here to recognize your police department. And just to add some context to what I'm about to say, so out of potentially almost six-hundred law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that would be eligible to apply for accreditation, only about forty-six percent have actually made it successfully once. In the case of the Montclair Police Department, they've actually achieved reaccreditation. So they fall in a lower number of about thirty-two percent that have made that commitment for five years, staying, maintaining their accredited status. So that's simply remarkable, and they should be commended for that. If you indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'd like to explain to you or share with you the significance of the achievement. So the Montclair Police Department has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has helped to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies. The New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is purposefully designed to enhance the professionalism and transparency in the state's public safety system. And during these uniquely challenging times and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Now accreditation gives an agency a preparedness plan and verification of excellence. Accreditation represents a significant professional achievement. It is a process, it requires adherence and compliance every three years as we come back to make sure that the agency maintains their accredited status. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances, so their sufficiency is built into this system. It is a certification by an independent body, in this case, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the agency, the Montclair Police Department, has been measured against an established set of state and national standards. And I should say, in the case of the Montclair Police Department, in many instances exceeded some of those standards. And I say that because at the end of those three years, we come here, we make sure that we see the actual proofs of compliance to a hundred-and-twelve standards, that in many instances require many proofs of compliance. And we find some items that sometimes can be resolved during their own site, in the case of the Montclair Police Department, as though, and as hard as we looked, we couldn't find any. So that, that is remarkable. Now, sometimes the citizens ask me privately or publicly what's in it for me. So research shows that accredited agencies have eleven percent fewer police professional liability claims, eleven percent fewer working compensation claims, and thirty-one percent fewer auto liability claims. Moreover, municipalities as yours, the participating male affiliated joint insurance fund stand to receive substantial insurance premium discounts when their police departments attain reaccreditation. But beyond this fiscal advantages, accreditation provides an objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. And accreditation embodies something that I've seen here today, is the precept of community-oriented policing. It creates a form in which police and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement and provide clear direction about community expectation. And officers in accredited agencies, as we see many here tonight, can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for their professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. In closing, I simply want to say, want to share with you and paraphrase briefly, some of what was said in that report that is forwarded to me that eventually finds itself in front of the commission. So the accreditation process has greatly benefited the entire agency, that is, the Montclair Police Department. Chief Conforty and his team has fully embraced their accreditation process specifically in the areas of policy development, internal compliance, technology and equipment, and community engagement. Again, the fact that we didn't find any issues was totally remarkable. Under the leadership of Chief Todd Conforty, I did practice his name, and I apologize for that. The high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is evident within the agency, leadership rank and file of forward-thinking and engaged in self-improvement. It is the opinion of the assessment team, and I certainly concur, as the director of the program, that the Montclair Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency which exemplifies all of the tenants of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. Therefore, it is indeed my honor tonight on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission to congratulate Chief, here we go again, Todd Conforty, Accreditation Manager Sergeant Charles Cunningham, the member of the Montclair Police Department, the mayor, the council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for having achieved reaccreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this commitment to excellence in policing. So to all, indeed, congratulations.
This is the part where you get to clap if you like. I'd like to publicly present the chief with the accreditation certificate. Chief, congratulations. You earned it.
Thank you, Mayor.
First off, I do want to thank Chief Delgado for making the trip down here. I know you're busy, I do appreciate you coming out here presenting us with the certification. We were re-accredited last year, as he mentioned, but unfortunately due to COVID and the restrictions, we couldn't gather here. So I talked to Sergeant Cunningham, we wanted to make sure we came out and get acknowledged for this accomplishment. But what I do want to say is that it's a hard, it's very hard to make, to get accredited. And the fact that the officers who worked on it did it during the height of the pandemic is even more remarkable to me, so I have to give them the credit that they deserve. And I do want to mention Sergeant Charlie Cunningham, who is the accreditation manager, for all the hard work he's done, as well as all the officers who worked on developing policies and assisted throughout the entire process. Thank you to all of you, and again, thank you, Mayor, council, for your support through everything. Thank you. Mayor, can I get a picture with everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. And chief, before we do come for that picture, just want to say, certainly on behalf of all of us and the residents, we know that that work you do, that work so many of your team did translates into a real-life impact for residents in a positive way, so we thank you for the effort that goes into that, we know how hard it is. So congratulations again, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quick, pardon me. I also want to thank you all, chief, the department. As many of you know, I do police reform work all over the country. I'm appointed by the Department of Justice, and I serve at the mercy of many of the district courts, federal district courts. I have to say, what I've seen out there across the country, you all do an amazing job, all of you, you especially, chief, leading that group. I want to thank you all for your service, and we have, Mr. Mayor, as we know, because we've served together for the last ten years now, we have an amazing, an exemplary, an excellent, thank you, police department here in Montclair.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, come on. Paul, you getting a picture? You're a big part of it.
With that, we will open up to public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate you having us. Guys gathering some out behind us?
All speakers must complete the sign-in sheet next to the podium before addressing the
Oh, wait. Good, good. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
council.
Slide over to the...
Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. If you wish to comment on a pending ordinance listed, please make your comments during the hearing for that ordinance, which will occur at a later date, at a later time. Now open public comment.
I think I'm first on the list here, so I'll start. My name is Scott Mixler, I'm a resident, sorry. Hi, can you hear me now? Yes, great. My name is Scott Mixler, I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I'm here today to voice my support for the redevelopment of La Cuanap Plaza. I realize it was an agenda item that was delayed from a recent council meeting, and it's not on the agenda today. I couldn't make that recent meeting. I wanted to express firstly my disappointment in the delay. It's something that's been close to my heart as a resident of the South End for some time. In fact, I sat here during a planning board meeting probably five years ago and discussed the original plans for that redevelopment. I want to stress a couple of things. One is that I think the time for action and moving that process forward is now. It's something that I do believe is a blight on this portion of the town, and it's something that I think that redevelopment can re-energize and be very helpful. It's, it's a, it's a part where I think just voicing support for it is one thing, but also everyone in the council understanding what the community needs is another. And I think we are at a time where the right answer sits in front of us, and it's something that we can push forward to, to a resolution. So I'm here to just simply say that I hope that we can come to the right conclusion soon and push forward with prudent redevelopment of La Cuanap Plaza, and I plan on attending the November twenty-ninth meeting to learn more and to, you know, to be available to also...
Okay, thank you again, and certainly well deserved. With that, we will open up to public comment. All speakers must complete the sign-in sheet next to the podium before addressing the council. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you wish to comment on a pending ordinance listed, please make your comments during the hearing for that ordinance, which will occur at a later date, at a later time. Now open public comment.
Hi, can you hear me now? Yes, great. My name is Scott Mixler. I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I'm here today to voice my support for the redevelopment of La Canaona Plaza. I realize it was an agenda item that was delayed from a recent council meeting, and it's not on the agenda today. I couldn't make that recent meeting. I wanted to express firstly, my disappointment in the delay. It's something that's been close to my heart as a resident of the South End for some time. In fact, I sat here during a planning board meeting probably five years ago and discussed the original plans for that redevelopment. I want to stress a couple of things. One, is that I think the time for action and moving that process forward is now. It's something that I do believe is a blight on this portion of the town, and it's something that I think that redevelopment can re-energize and be very helpful. It's a part where I think just voicing support for it is one thing, but also everyone in the council understanding what the community needs is another. And I think we are at a time where the right answer sits in front of us, and it's something that we can push forward to a resolution. So I'm here to just simply say that I hope that we can come to the right conclusion soon and push forward with prudent redevelopment of La Canaona Plaza. And I plan on attending the November 29th meeting to learn more and to be available to also comment there. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy to be here tonight. A Hava Felicidad of the Tenants Organization of Montclair. And I said a little bit earlier, it feels pretty fresh in here. So I expect that it's a good night. And I'm here to speak for those who still have some issues speaking for themselves and fears of retaliation. With the understanding that our township is doing what it can with regards to rent violations and issues that are directly tenant-related, my concern is the women of all ages who are being threatened by owners and landlords. It's the banging on doors for non-emergencies, the unresponsiveness, and the in-person intimidation. No, it is not okay for contractors or the like to enter your apartment for non-emergencies. So we have women who are now putting the chain on the door, who weren't doing it before because people are trying to enter their apartments for non-emergency access to just like touch up or fix something that they're supposed to receive notice about. You have a right to have advance notice of at least 24 hours. And the whole entering of the apartments while you're there or while you're not without notification and your response within a reasonable time period, which we know to be 24 to 48 hours, you have rights. No entering your apartment for multifamily apartment. No one should be entering your apartment and going into your bathroom and using your personal bath towel to do their cleanup work. No one should be yelling at you to just throw on a towel and let them into your apartment. This is scary for all ages of women who are not used to such treatment or requests. No, the maintenance or contractor should not be entering your apartment while you and your roommate are in your bed sleeping. No one should be moving your belongings without notice, especially when you've been given access to and permission for storage or other use. We ask that everyone be respectful of their neighbors as well. We ask that you reach out to us at the Tenants Organization of Montclair. Compassion should be at its height these days. Not a one on a scale of one to 10, with 10 being the most compassionate, an eight, nine, or a 10. Please be respectful of your neighbors again. We have a number of new Gen Zs and millennials moving into town, and they're doing their best to pull their weight. And many of them are paying rents in upwards of $1,700 to live here. And they love it here. And a lot of these tenants are coming in, and they're not familiar with New Jersey, much less their rights around renting. What hurts my heart the most is the disrespect of and disregard for our mature and aging tenants of the silent generation, those who preceded the baby boomers. They're spicy, and they know how to speak up for themselves. However, they still need to be supported, especially when times have gotten hard with illness, striking families, and their leveled responsibilities with their children and their grandchildren. We at Toome will continue to empower our diverse community base. This includes our men who experience this in a somewhat different way. And we want everyone to be able to stay. So if you or someone you know is having this issue in town, please reach out to us for an appointment to join and to know where and how to access your rights. And we do refer out what is beyond our scope so that we can help the most. Now. Yeah, this is it, this is it, but you got to have this. So I'm ending for the night. I always make this joke that when I retire, although I will still do housing advocacy, that I'm going to do stand-up comedy. Now, I have trust for a lot of things and a lot of people. However, I don't trust staircases because they're always up to something. Have a good night.
Mayor, if I may make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just want to acknowledge what was just presented. It sounds like issues that may appropriately be referred to the Landlord Tenant Advisory Committee. So I just want to make sure that people are taking advantage of this body that I know helps to where they can. I know you're very good. Very good. Thank you. Okay, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we do have at least some avenue to direct people for some kind of guidance on matters that you described. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Hi, everyone. My name is Deirdre Birmingham. I would like to respectfully ask you to please stream more of your council meetings for the 2023 session. It's really a no-brainer if you believe in good government. Mr. Spiller, I'm not sure where you stand on this issue, but I know that you believe in restoring confidence in government. It's part of your platform, and we, right here in Montclair, have lost confidence in our government. Please stream these meetings and rebuild trust with us. It's been argued by some that not streaming meetings will make it easier for the council to get work done. It is indeed unfortunate that this council finds it difficult to work together. But why is the public being punished for that? Why are you making it more difficult for us to participate in our own government? This feels very anti-democratic. The fire service fiasco reflects what happens when you make decisions without public input. Many residents no longer trust this council and town government to represent its interests. Not streaming meetings, not fulfilling Oprah requests in a timely matter, not producing council meeting minutes. These actions create mistrust, and some of them are actually illegal. We need transparency more than ever, considering what's been happening in the town government and fire department. If you are against streaming these meetings, can you please explain your rationale? Especially if you made transparency and good governance a central tenet of your platform. These things are incompatible, and you cannot have it both ways. Switching gears on another topic, I want to say that the fire promotions should not go through in light of the issues with that department. I want to understand what the status of those permissions are, and I believe that that exam should be retaken. And lastly, can you please tell the public the plan to hire a new town manager? Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Lauren Berman. I live at 487 Highland. We're all speaking together. You've probably heard of our recently formed group, Montclair Residents for Good Governance. Following the 500 signatures, asking for all council meetings to be televised, we noticed that the November 1st meeting was only accessible to the public in person. For your information, many Montclair residents are not able to attend meetings in person because two-thirds of households have dependent kids, we have seniors, residents with disabilities, residents who simply cannot attend for professional or personal reasons. In addition, neither the public nor the council can now follow the town progress as there are no formal tools or procedures to understand what is going on in town. This needs to change. We're kindly asking for a resolution covering the following: reasonable and easy-to-implement items at the next council meeting.
We are asking for live streaming of all council meetings, including budget meetings and conference meetings as important decisions are made. These recordings should also be accessible via the town's YouTube channel for viewing post-recording.
Live stream of all council meetings, including budget meetings and conference meetings as important decisions are made. These recordings should be also accessible via the town YouTube channel for viewing post-recordings. I just want to point out, it's not scripted here. This meeting is coinciding with the Board of Education meeting right now that's taking place right now. They've been streaming their meetings forever. They live in the same town as we do. They have access probably to the same technology. It just doesn't make sense.
Oral updates from the town manager on key projects for 15 minutes at each council meeting, followed by a brief Q and A session. Four lists of upcoming meetings with date, time, and location between the town manager and heads of departments to discuss the annual budget, available on the town website with reasonable notice. Publishing this information solely through outside media sources is no longer sufficient in 2022.
Beginning January 2023, weekly progress reports, two to three pages, on the town website, what has been done in the past week and what will be done in the following week. Please note that we have started to livestream the meetings ourselves, and these videos are shared informally among Montclair residents. We intend to continue doing so as long as the township does not provide the service for all meetings. We count on your collaboration, and we are happy to start another petition if you're willing to know how many residents are interested in the above items, despite the 500 signatures already collected. Thank you, Montclair residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And I would just like to add, each of you should have received an email with a proposed resolution that we are hoping that you will bring forth for a vote tonight. In case you didn't see it via email or on the dais that was left for you tonight, here it is, large. Feel free to pass it around. We believe this is sufficient, and we hope that you will vote on it tonight. And we are going to keep record. We'll put some check marks as to who's voting for it and who's voting against it here. The other thing I just want to add is at the last town council, or sorry, the conference meeting that was not televised, I believe Mr. Bur, somebody had asked, maybe it was myself or maybe a few people, about the investigation done by Mr. Morgan. You said that you couldn't pass it out and that Ms. DeVito wasn't here at the conference meeting. But I see she's here tonight, and so I'm curious if everybody has received. I'm seeing Ms. Schlegar shaking her head no. I'm wondering what's taking so long since the investigation has been concluded. And Ms. DeVito, you're here tonight. So hopefully, you can pass it out and make it public as we have requested. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eileen Birmingham. And I'm here tonight to echo this idea that we should be encouraging as many people as possible to have access to town council meetings and learn what's going on in our town. I understand that in the past, you have used the upstairs conference room and had quiet meetings that were not well-attended, perhaps, and un-televized. But I'm hopeful that you understand that that option to go upstairs with few people around is not really available to you anymore, not fairly, anyway. People want to know what is going on, and you have a very easy way to accomplish that. Stream all of the meetings so they are accessible to as many people as possible. I know that there seems to be some issues among council members. And with all due respect, I don't think it's because you have been openly streaming meetings. On the contrary, I think it's because there has been too much secrecy and withholding of information from each other and from the public. The idea, for example, that Bruce Morgan's report detailing mistreatment of the CFO was not shared with the council left the town obviously open to litigation. Because one of the underlying principles of effective human resource management is taking complaints and subsequent investigations seriously. It is really hard to see how that happened in this case because the report was completed in August, and it does not appear that some of the council members were even aware of it. It does not seem that you've even received it. Since the town manager serves at the will of the town council, that report should have been immediately forwarded to you. It is still not clear what would have happened if Ms. Rao had not filed a lawsuit. Would we still be here acting like nothing had happened and the investigation was not done? This is a very serious matter, and residents of Montclair deserve to remain informed. Similarly, how is it possible that the law firm O'Toole Scrivo reached an entirely different conclusion than our internal investigator regarding the firefighter's promotional exam? And what is the plan to rectify this going forward? With everything going on in this town, you should be welcoming sunlight, not closing the curtains. I heard from three people today whose partners are sick, and they felt it was best that they stay home tonight. Fortunately, they are able to watch on TV this evening or viewer recording, since the move to a Monday meeting caught some people off guard. I am glad that they can make the safest choice and to take care of their loved ones and still have access to our town public meetings. And frankly, it makes me sad that you would choose to exclude people as you seem to want to do. It does not seem consistent with the values of our community. Please reconsider. You can easily stream the meetings. We heard very important information from Ms. Felicidad today about the rights of particularly women, and these are the kind of things that happen at these meetings routinely. Please make them available to as many people as possible. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alan Feu. I guess I'm addressing a big issue here about Seymour Street. It's not what it used to be. And we have been a resident of that place for like over 10 years, myself. And it's just unbelievable what's going on there, the traffic. I'm wondering at this point, who allowed the Wellmont owners to have a child center there at the end of Seymour Street? It should go anytime during the day. It's absolutely crazy with the traffic there. There's more traffic there than on Fifth Avenue in New York. I just took pictures again tonight. It's like, we can't even park. They park in our own spaces. You know, they put their lights, but there's no control of the, by the police of what's going on. So that's one thing that I've been watching. Another thing is, we watch all these beautiful buildings like going up there, but it doesn't seem that it's being patrolled by the police at all. The other day, I was like at my window in my kitchen there, and I had two guys peeing in front of me, right? Another time, last week, some guys until 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, drink beers on the plaza there. They had a big stack of beers there. I had to go to them. It really disturbed my sleep, you know, because they don't realize that whatever sound goes on on the plaza, it echoes in our buildings. And this is just something that, you know, I called the police a few times and say, yeah, we'll send somebody, we'll send somebody, you know. But there should be a policeman patrolling there, two guys patrolling there and just making sure that, you know, there is order there. So I think, yeah, that was a mistake that this child center was allowed to be there because people are going to come and bring their kids and pick them up. I don't understand that thing. I don't know if there's such thing as a curfew for people. Like, you know, after we have these wonderful meets at the Wellmont Theater, people stay there until like 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, smoke some pot, laugh out loud. You know, some of us need to sleep, you know. But if they go home at 1:00, that's great. But a lot of time, it's way later than that. So there's no control there. It's out of control. I would like to know personally, in the name of all those who live on my street, and there were like several hundred of us, when is the street going to get fixed? We have been putting up with all these trucks for the construction, and it had to be done. But we have But we have broken curbs, we hear like you could break your foot if you cross, or they put a little patch there, big deal. But I would like to know if there's a date by which this street is going to get fixed, Nobody seems to be addressing that. Now, we have Summit Health over there, and there are my doctors. It's convenient, it's right there on top of the building. The thing is, you got, you got rats coming back on the street because they have body parts, their sandwiches into plastic bags that, you know, the rat doesn't have to do much to get in there. I don't know who controls that, I've called their management, and said, well, that's how it is, sir, you know? But instead of putting like tough bags on the street, we wouldn't be having like those kind of problem with the rats. So I would have other things to talk about, but I think I took enough time. What I want to say definitely, because I think you're in charge, that's, that's, that's in your, that's in your, in your area. I have left you an email one time, and I don't believe I ever received a response. But we're suffering on that street, big time. We have people wandering around there and going into our buildings. A few nights ago, we had somebody with a rope there, like going, what was he going to do in my vestibule? I mean, like, is that good? Not good. So could we please take note of that, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and thank you very much, everybody, for, for those comments. Just to hit a couple pieces, do want to note, and appreciate it was noted, thank you to Councilman Cummings, who has had a number of hearings so far on Lackawanna Plaza, those will continue. Councilwoman Price Abrams, Councilman Yakabelis and I will also be hosting one as well for third-world residents of budding, and of course, open to everybody. So hopefully people can attend that as well to get that information. And it is scheduled for, I believe our next meeting to be introduced was the date, right? December 6th was the one, right? December 6th? So that's the status there. I appreciate that. Just also, just going to the last piece, you know, talking about the Seymour Street, I certainly can, can note that the township specifically felt that a child education center there was not appropriate, that was expressed specifically. The section of the project that the township had some say over, the town denied the ability for them to use that space. They used a separate space for it. All the traffic issues that you're noting was identified at the time, and now currently the township is pressing to ensure that they, you know, pay for policing and security to make sure that the traffic is lessened as a concern. So that conversation is ongoing now, and we're working on that piece, on an understandable outcome, being that we thought the same thing, that is happening would happen, and just, you know, determined that and said you shouldn't put it there, but under the law, they are allowed to put an entity there. So we're dealing with that on that end, but I wanted to let you know that, it certainly was not lost. I know Councilwoman Schlegar was a strong advocate right from the start, that would be an issue, raised it at the start, I remember, X years ago, and here we are. But I know you also remain part of those discussions around policing and other pieces, so wanted to specifically note that, and certainly along with Councilwoman Price Abrams, who's part of those conversations, and I'm sure she'll keep you updated on that as well. Moving forward, we had a number of, yep, Councilman Cummings?
Yeah, I want to make a very clear statement that the gentleman made a very good point about the impact on him and his neighbors, and that's very important to me with Lackawanna Plaza. It's that the folks who live near Lackawanna Plaza are aware of the development and what it will mean to them, because some of the unintended consequences, such as what you're going through right now, are things that are most important to me. So it's very important to me that those who live in the area are up to speed on what is going to happen there and get as much information about it as possible. So I appreciate, and I hope that my council colleagues also take into consideration what you said, because it is going to be a very different area, and the folks who live there most, mostly impacted, deserve the opportunity to be heard. So I appreciate what you brought up. Thank you.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, sir, and we will follow up, and you heard, some of these things are long-ago conversations, but I will follow up with you in terms of certainly the road paving and the other questions that maybe we can be more concrete and do something about, but I will make a time with you. I also just wanted to respond, it was, sorry, Deirdre Birmingham's, it was, yeah, Deirdre, you had, so you had sent some things in writing, and I had made some requests of the clerk for clarification on points that you had raised in writing that you, I believe, also referenced, and so in terms of copies of the meetings, so what, the clerk, would you like me to present this, or did you want to respond? Okay. So I sent the link, I believe, to the, where the minutes are found, but the minutes through October 11th had been approved, and, and the clerk noted it was brought to her attention only on November 1st that they hadn't been properly uploaded into Ecode. So as of November 10th, all minutes from January through June have been uploaded, so I'm not sure if you've looked again recently, if anybody has looked for them, but they are now there, is that correct? Right? Executive sessions are closed to the public, correct? So that's...
There are minutes that we post for executive session. Not as, not at, I'm not sure up to what period of time the minutes are posted, but I'm not, I will have to look into that.
Okay, I'm going to finish just offering my responses back about what I was able to ascertain to the email that was written. So some of the minutes were pending the mayor's signature, and those will promptly upload it as soon as that should be taken care of, right? Oprah requests are responded to within the seven-day statutory timeframe unless the responding department requests an extension. Extension of time are permissible when it takes longer to compile the records. Some typical reasons for extending the time to respond include the volume of records, need for legal review, records not stored on site, and staff shortages. And you had requested a cop, submitted a request for copies of emails sent and received over a 16-month period between three individuals, and the Office of Information Technology had requested an extension of time to retrieve those emails. So they would then be forwarded to the Law Department for review so that redactions could be made, and then I believe that's the process. So I just wanted to make sure that you received the response and the other members of the public would know that.
I appreciate that. A few of my Oprah requests have not been handled.
All right, thank you.
Very specific, I'm very sure, I just, I don't know why, if it's a staff shortage, I just, some of them are not, not... But thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate you looking into it, I just, it's not enough to... But I, I thank you for taking the time.
For the, yeah, okay, gotcha, yeah, I understood. Thanks, Rick. All right. All right, we do have a number of pending ordinances also, so first, we have ordinance O-2230, which is an ordinance to amend Section 327 Vehicles and Traffic Code of the Township of New Jersey. And I so move?
Second.
Just moved and seconded, and I'm going to open the hearing to the public if there's any, without objection, sir objection. Seeing none, anyone who should be heard on ordinance O-2230? Without objection, I'll close the hearing. Seeing no objection, hearing is closed. Any questions, concerns, comments from my colleagues? Councilman Yakabelis, I believe, we also discussed that after this, we'll move and cleared it with attorneys that this would be considered emergency and look to implement right away, but that's a separate motion after. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlak?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegar?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabelis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor, and I'd like to make a motion for a resolution to enact an emergency or declare an emergency for this ordinance O-22-30 on the grounds of pedestrian safety.
Second. Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlak?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegar?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabelis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next, we've got a number of items from, from our agenda, consent agenda, we've got items 1 through 16, which are part of the consent agenda, and I so move?
Second.
Just moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlak?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegar?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabelis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22244, which was the resolution awarding the contract for Nielsen Ford to purchase two vehicles. I know we had questions about this last time, so I'll move it so we can discuss, so I so move?
Second.
Just moved and seconded. Mr. Scannellberry, do you have a response? I believe it was, I think Councilwoman Schlegar and Councilwoman Price Abrams had a couple questions on this one last time.
Yes, we leaped ahead a little bit, because in my report, I was going to address some of your questions, but the reason that they went in this direction regarding Ford Escape, it was discontinued. The only response we received back on the bid, excuse me, my throat is really, I'm losing it. The only response we received back on the bid was one response, and that was Chrysler. That bid was turned down from the supervisor, the maintenance supervisor. As of far, as of far the Ford escapes, it's discontinued at this point in time, okay? And that's why we went into, I inquired about the electric vehicles and everything. I'm going to get to that a little later, okay?
Well, can you get to that one? Can you get to that now, maybe, just because I know we're discussing it and want to consider the electric, electric versus not?
Give me a second. Okay, I'm meeting with the department directors, as you know, and I've asked them to consider the electric vehicles when assessing their rolling stock needs. And going forward into 2023, as they replace, that's, that's going to be their first option, the electric vehicles. To that end, I requested Mr. Costello and the new sustainability officer, Ms. Johnson, to look at putting charging stations at 205. Last Thursday, they met with a vendor to get that, that conversation started, to put two charging stations in this location on the west, west side of the department, okay? And then they're going to go out, they have, they're going to insert that dollar amount into the 2023 capital budget for the charging stations, okay? Even if we had electric vehicles at this time, we have no infrastructure to support them, none. So that's the direction we're going in. To go back again, I requested all directors, once they, they speak of replacing their rolling stock, to consider electric vehicles, especially those departments within the boundaries of the township. Secondly, again, Mr. Costello and Ms. Johnson, upon my request, spoke to a vendor regarding installing charging stations at, at 205, on the west side of the parking area, okay? So that's, that's coming, okay? That's coming, and they're going to be putting that in the 2023 capital. So when we get to that, we've inserted the money for that.
Mr. Scannellberry, I have a question on that. The, the charging, the infrastructure charging you talk about?
Yeah.
Wasn't that long ago, we had a grant specifically for a charging station here?
I asked about that.
Now, that, my understanding, was, was foregone at the time because of the fact that the footprint with the acquisition of the property next door was undetermined as to what that potentially looked like, anything in the future. Are there other locations that are being looked at in close proximity that would not run into the same challenge potentially that the last one did?
From what I understand, the problem with that $40,000 grant, I think, it would, no, I'm sorry, with the prior grant, it would cost about $40,000 to do whatever maintenance they needed to do to carve out for that station. What we have now is not dependent upon the PNC Bank. What they're looking at is anywhere on the west, specifically the pole in the middle, because of the short proximity to what they can engineer, is that would be the best place to put the charging stations. Again, that was one vendor. They're going to be going out with RFQs to speak to vendors, to find out what's the best practices as far as the implementing of the infrastructure, and then we budget, we're going to budget $30,000 to $40,000 to implement the, the charging stations, once we get a sufficient response.
I would look back to the grant that we had, and see if we could reapply for something along those lines, if it was amount that, those dollars. And secondly, again, I would look though to determine that footprint issue that came up last time, to make sure that it isn't a problem in terms of what you defined there, but as long as you're considering those pieces, we can discuss as you find out more from the papers.
Right, I don't think this will be a footprint issue, because it's pretty much where we park on the west side. It's not, that's not going to be an issue there.
Councilman Yak, Councilman Yakabelis, Councilwoman Schlegar, and then back to you, if you have.
Thanks, Mayor. We also learned, Councilwoman Price Abrams and I learned the other night directly from the commissioner, DEP, that there are grants available to municipalities to cover the price differential between a gas-powered and an electric-powered vehicle. So if a new truck was going to cost $60,000, and it's $70,000 for the electric model, the state would actually reimburse us for that $10,000. They've got a program, it's fully funded, and so they just made us aware of that, so just to put that on your radar as well.
So is that something the education subcommittee will address with our grant writers?
We have worked through the grant writers or through you, right? So we're telling you to take a look at those as well, right?
That was in a prior lifetime, I worked with them.
Yeah, so we're asking to make sure you're working with staff to, to look into those grants as well.
Ms. Johnson, I think, would know what to do there as well.
Okay, I'll speak with her.
Councilwoman Schlegar, and then back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe those questions that you answered, Mr. Scannellberry, that I appreciate, were Councilwoman Price Abrams' questions from the last meeting. My questions were why we were buying two new vehicles when we have 16 vehicles sitting in the parking lot? That nobody seemed to know whose departments those cars belong to, who they're allocated to, who's allowed to drive them. I once asked several years ago if I could use one to do some things for the town, that I had a lot of driving to do one Saturday around town, and I was told I wasn't allowed to, because I wasn't on the insurance list to drive the cars. So I was just curious, who drives those 16 cars? And who has the keys to the car? Where are the keys?
The keys are within the departments, and, right?
I was just curious, maybe at some point, we could get a list of who belongs to the 16 cars?
Well, it's the health department, it's code enforcement, whatever, but again, you've stolen my thunder here, because...
I'm sorry?
Part of, part of, part of what, in meeting with staff, when I, when I met with the QPA, I asked them to take a look at the concerns that the fleet management, because I don't, I don't know at this point, the status of the fleet management, how robust the management is, but that's something he's looking into now. What my options are regarding fleet management, both internally, and maybe that's something that can be outsourced.
Okay.
Okay, so once I get an answer for you, I'll have that.
Okay. I just find it very hard to, to raise my hand, to spend all this money on new cars when we can't, you know, get a hold of the cars that we already have, so, all right. Thank you very, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would have to concur with Counselor Schlegar, you know, I think we need to know what the list is, so we understand that if there is, I mean, I'm not sure why we're getting two new cars, if in fact, you're saying you're still, and respectfully, you are putting your arms around a role that was not yours till recently, so recognizing that you, you don't know what you don't know, and you're making great inquiries at the moment, it just seems that we should understand that before we authorize purchase of two new cars. So that was the second comment, but the first one I was going to make was, to the extent that the footprint of, again, of this, call it campus, it may be at some point, might change, I think to the mayor's point, perhaps, I went to the DCS yard, is there any other place that isn't likely to change, that could be where the EV station could go, and, you know, just for your consideration... And, you know, just for your consideration, you don't have to really necessarily respond, I think, unless you wish.
Well, just responding off the top of my head, I would say that you'd have to calculate the ROI on that. If you're talking about the footprint changing into a new municipal complex, no telling when that's going to happen. It's not going to happen in the next few years, but we can put the charging stations and get our return, and then just move that infrastructure when we get to that point. I mean, it may be a decade before we see a new municipal bill. See what I'm saying?
And I appreciate, honestly, I appreciate that you've looked into making a policy from January forward, that you'd put money into the capital budget for those cars, and again, there hopefully would be some offset dollars that we're going to get from the state, maybe in the federal dollars, I'm not sure, but that's what we have, you know, folks who are going to chase down. And, you know, this is a priority area, and I think if it's appropriate to purchase two new cars now, I respect that you're saying you want to sort of finish this process off and then we'll start again, but I still think there's a slightly open question about whether...
Yes, because the amount that you see, $57,000 or whatever this is, the best price that's available because it's the Educational Services Commission, which is the co-op. So those are co-op dollars, in that market dollars.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
No.
Counselor Russo? Absent. Counselor Schlegel?
No.
Counselor Yakobalis?
No.
Mayor Spiller?
No. Next is Resolution R-22246, which is a resolution awarding fair and open contracts in negli engineering for their municipal engineering services. I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Sorry, next is Resolution R-22245, which is a resolution to adopt the council meeting schedule for year 2023. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. I believe there's some questions. Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. I received this, I guess, by way of the clerk toward the end of last week, and it reflects, as many members of the public have noted, it reflects a couple of changes. One is that we, some of my colleagues apparently proposed that we would move the meetings to starting at 6:00 PM, and then the other big change is that there are five less meetings over the course of the year, and if we average two a month, and even in the summer months, we tend to do one, it's like a 20% reduction in meetings. And I just, I wasn't aware of it, I hadn't been consulted on it, and I found myself a little bit surprised that that was the direction we were talking about going, as there's a lot of conversation with the public about transparency. And also, just as terms of process, I wasn't aware that there was a thought to move the meetings to six o'clock till I heard about it sort of officially. I would think that would be a matter we would discuss among ourselves, so I was surprised. Six o'clock doesn't really work for me particularly, but I'm mindful it also doesn't really work for the public, potentially, it's dinner hour. I would propose that we keep the 7:00 PM time, and I do have one particular conflict with the schedule that was announced, so I would propose that we table it, we have some conversation among ourselves, and see if there's another approach that we might choose to go forward.
Madam Clerk, I might ask, who were the individuals who wanted it earlier, who asked for an earlier meeting time?
Just give me a minute so I can pull the email. If I remember, it was Counselor Yakobalis that sent the email, and then there was support from Counselor Schlegel and Deputy Mayor Herlock, but please let me, that's correct? Okay, I won't even look for the email.
Okay, great, so if there's a will, I'd ask maybe you to team up with two others because we can't have one, three, right? And have a conversation about it, and come to, either, it goes with what you're saying, or, okay?
I'd also like to be heard about this. A, six o'clock really doesn't work for me. I don't work in Montclair, and I think, you know, the individuals who supported this do, to get here at six, you know, I already make accommodations to get here for the seven o'clock meeting. And so I think this is an example of not talking to everyone and getting feedback of what is the impact on this. I'll not be able to make the March 28th meeting. I'll be, I could tell you right now, I'll be out of town for the NCAA tournament, leave that Tuesday prior to the Final Four. I do think that, considering that it is five less meetings, that although, you know, I'm, listen, I've said it to anybody publicly, I'm not big on streaming meetings, but I'm not against having meetings. And I think we have a lot of work that we can get done, and to have one conference meeting in January, when we're talking about, A, moving Lackawanna Plaza on December 6th, you know, there are things I think that this could have been handled much better amongst us. To find out in a phone call about this and not any kind of emails, that's one thing that I want to be clear about, but I think, you know, as I look where all of us work, it's easy for many on here to get here at six o'clock, it's not easy for me. I think that should have been taken into consideration, and so therefore, I can tell you, I'm not for six o'clock. I think we should have a conversation where we can table this and discuss potential areas, you know, of compromise. And I appreciate Counselor Price Abrams bringing this to me.
That's exactly what I'm saying in terms of trying to find two of the three, right? Because we can't have all three, so two of the three and one over here, you know, discussing all of these concepts. I imagine, and you can just tell me, imagine the same conversation of the number of meetings that you guys put forward. So let's have the conversation exactly as noted. I'd ask that we table this, you guys come back to us and give us an update at the next council meeting. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, if I could just comment, Mayor, too.
Councilman Yakobalis?
I sent an email as a thought starter. I didn't know it was going to turn into a resolution. So, you know, that's just to say, I would never come in here and say, you know, if it doesn't work for either of you, too bad, you got to get here, it's to have a conversation. And you and I had the conversation, and I told you that I would be flexible, I'm completely flexible on the start time. I'm just now hearing Counselor Cummings' perspective as well, so I think we take it away, we figure out what the compromise is. Where I was coming from with the suggestion for the earlier start time is how many nights we've been here till midnight or later. It's just been, there's been a lot of late nights, and my thinking was that if we have a six o'clock scheduled meeting, that would afford us an opportunity when we have executive sessions, to be able to have that executive session first, because there's been a couple instances where we really would have benefited from having the executive session first to be able to make decisions and then come down and then have a public comment. So it's a little bit of, you know, I think it maybe comes down to, and we can have this conversation to the mayor's suggestion, strategic scheduling, maybe there's a few when we know we're going to be having budget hearings and receiving police chiefs and other things that are going to be longer, we can agree that we'll have an earlier start time for those meetings, but then the standard cadence can be, you know, whatever we compromise on.
I think that you sharing some of those pieces is important to hear. That's great, I think there's different perspectives, and I don't think anyone's thinking ill intent here, but I think, again, appreciate this discussion, and you guys, I think, should solicit feedback from all colleagues, that the group of three, as any committee would, but, you know, these are deeper issues, you're going to have to, I'm hearing iterations already, good ones that we should, you should debate out, discuss, and come back to us with varying work products. And by the way, any resolution is just that, it's a start point, you know, when we want to talk about it, that's why we move it, we can table it, move it, end it, whatever we want to do.
I do think the idea of an executive session being held before meetings is one we should strongly consider, but we also need to make sure that if we're going that route, that we allocate enough time. And so we had a meeting before where I made a suggestion of doing that, but we agreed that we didn't want to have a lawyer here if we started and got it, it would add to time. So I think if we're going to do that, we may consider starting sometimes at 5:00 PM. And when we have executive session, I understand the importance of those, so, you know, I'm willing to be flexible in that, to move it up so that what I don't want to do is go in executive session and come out here at eight o'clock. So, you know, we cannot determine how long, one hour for executive session, to me, is not sufficient, because those conversations tend to elicit questions that we do not know going into the meeting, and therefore, I think we need to, as you guys discussed this, I strongly suggest you consider a five o'clock start time for executive session, if that is what you all want to do in terms of moving executive sessions, or being flexible in saying, if we have multiple items to talk about, maybe we start at executive five, or sometimes it could be a six o'clock start. But please make sure that you do consider everyone when you have those conversations.
And I'd say certainly, as where you started with this, Councilman Cummings, I would note that, as I know many of us, you know, have our full-time jobs, right? We're mindful of when we talk about starting at whatever time, right, and what that means, so that's going to counterbalance and push against some of that as well, so just to be fair. But that's, again, part of the discussions you guys can have, and solicit input from everyone, and go from there, so.
If I could just add that, part of my thinking of pushing back a couple of, taking off a couple of meetings was to also supplement some of those meetings with special meetings, like Mr. Yakobalis just said, during budget time, to have budget hearings, where each department head comes and makes a presentation to the council. We had that a few years ago, I found it very informative and effective. We received the library comes to make a special presentation, the Montclair, the Pre-K Center came many years to give a presentation. We give the Pre-K Center quite a lot of funding, we're sort of partners with them. We also have the judge comes to do a presentation on what goes on in our courthouse, which I found very informative, so I was hoping we would have some of those special hearings. We even had them on Saturdays on a couple of occasions, if we had to. I also would like to hear from department heads, you know, from Mr. Scannellberry's office, from the clerk's office. So all those, they're timely, they take a lot of time. We gave those department heads sort of a blueprint on how we wanted to see their, how their departments were laid out, what their budgets are for this year, for next year. So those meetings are very, it takes a lot of time, so I thought we could supplement some of the meetings that we take away with some of those meetings, so, but we could discuss that when we all get together.
All right, so great, so we'll leave it as, I'm going to move, we table that, without objection, is there objection? Hearing no objection, we have tabled Resolution R-22245. We have no council meetings discussion at this time, we've tabled all of it, and all of it will be part of the discussion that you have. Next is Resolution R-22247, which is a resolution awarding the contract for architectural design services for Montclair for the library bathrooms ADA compliance project. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any questions, concerns, or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
I just, I have one comment. Many years ago, we had the exact same project that was done at the Montclair Art Museum, and they were able to get community development block grant to do that. Is that what this is?
Yes.
I didn't see that, where does it say that? Did I miss that? I don't see it on the...
It's CDBG because it's ADA compliance, and that falls under CDBG.
On page two-three?
It's on Ms. Calley's memo in the second paragraph. This project is paid with funds from Montclair's 2022 CDBG.
Oh, okay, oh terrific, thank you, okay. Great, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Schlegel. Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22248, which is a resolution authorizing the award of professional service contract without the public bidding to Lindenberry McCormick Esther Burke Cooper PC to conduct independent employment practices investigation. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Mr. Burr, is this the one you mentioned last time?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's the awarding of the contract for Lindenberry to do the...
The awarding of the contract for Lindenberry to do the investigation that we discussed at the last council meeting.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22249, which is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds in accordance with provisions NJSA 40A:4-58. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is, we'll jump to Resolution R-22251, which is a resolution regarding sustainable land use pledge, and of course, this helps us with our sustainable jersey. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm in favor of doing this because I'd like to get that certification for sure. I just, in reading this, I want to make sure, everybody reads it carefully, the staff reads it, because if we are making these pledges, they're quite significant in terms of changing how we spend our money as a town, in terms of investing in and making eco-friendly choices with our dollars. It goes beyond vehicle acquisition and charging stations across the board, so I just, I want to make sure, and maybe this is a memo that goes out, Mrs. Scannellberry, to all the staff that the councils, if we do, is adopting this resolution, and to really read through it carefully and to see as we're making spending decisions as a town at every department level, that we are living this, we're not just saying it, that's important to me, I don't want to make a hollow pledge tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could respond, Counselor, primarily, it would live with the planning and zoning, the decisions they make in regards to our boards.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22250, Councilwoman Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas invoices against the Township of Montclair in favor of the following persons, the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received duly audited and found correct, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair in the county of Essex that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid and that the checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively inherent after stated on the computer printout attached here to and made apart here of. This bill list is dated November 14th, year 2022, for $1,208,66.65, and I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo absent. Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22252, which is a resolution authorizing executive session without the public being permitted to attend in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12B. Subject is litigation of personnel, I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, before we go on executive session, because some may not be here, and I don't want to last, I wanted to say that former councilperson Sandy Lang passed away last Thursday. Sandy was a fourth ward councillor, and her wake is going to be Thursday, November 17th, at Martin's Home for Service, that's on Elm Street, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and the funeral is Friday, November 18th, at 11:00 AM at Trinity Presbyterian Church, which is on the corner of Orange Road and High Street. I just wanted to make sure that we got that in now. Ms. Lang is a beautiful soul and a great person who served this town with dignity, and I think I just wanted to make sure that, you know, those who are watching and those here know that now. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are in executive...
If I could just add to that, I'm sorry. I served with Sandy on the council for those four years that she was here, and I also want to extend my condolences to her family. She was a really hard worker. She compassionate, dedicated to this community and to the residents, and I considered her a friend. And she once said to me, when she, on the last day of our, when she stepped down on the council, she said to me, she says, "You know what, Robin?" She said someday, she said, "I might not be a councilwoman anymore, but someday in my obituary, it's going to say, 'Former Councilwoman Sandra Lang.'" And I'll never forget when she said that to me. And I hope she rests in peace. She's a very dear woman. Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much. We are now out of our executive session. I appreciate that. Just for informational purposes, an update. Mr. Scambley, what is the update also on the assessment of the departments that we've called for as well? How's that going and where's that at?
I did put a little something here for you, Mayor. In response to the governing body's charge of undertaking a comprehensive review of township government operation, establishing a more effective and efficient management of the township's departments and division functions and the expeditions administration of public business, and to review the operational structures, supervisory and management control to maximize productivity and greater efficiencies, and to review and examine the employee handbook and other associated tasks. for the human resource director's position. I forwarded an offer, and it's pending a response. I had the second interview for the senior services director's position today. And today, I also received resumes to begin the interview process for the health department, the director of health department position. Yes. No, he's going to remain in the department. He just does not want to move forward, but he doesn't want to be the director. Okay. In operations, I've instituted weekly meetings with department heads so as I identify projects, priorities, and timelines. I signed the 2023 agreement with the County of Essex for the Ride for Life program to ensure there's no gap in transportation for seniors. I've requested the QPA to put RFQs out for all non-essential services. I plan to consolidate the rent control office and the Montclair Housing Authority, which is known as Section 8, into a new office of landlord tenant relations. Aside from the economies gained by having institutional knowledge of housing laws and regulations in one shop, messaging is important. Softening the message by eliminating the adversary with somewhat stigmatizing language such as "control" and "Section 8" may lend itself to a reboot in the relationship between this portion of our government and the greater community. I tracked down the employee handbook.
Mr. Scannellberry?
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is a question because it was of interest to me that you, I think you said you were taking an effort to consolidate the rent control office?
The Office of Rent Control.
With?
And Section 8, and put it under one shop, and put it in one shop, which would be the Office of Landlord Tenant Relations.
I get conceptually why that all coheres. I'm sorry. It makes sense. But I'm just mindful that we, there was the ordinance that we passed that, I don't know, the ordinance for rent control established the Office of Rent Control.
Right.
So I'm just wondering how it is that, can that be done without amending that law, that ordinance?
It's still going to be the Office of Rent Control. It's just going to be within, under one roof, in one shop.
Okay.
I mean, and if we find out, Mr. Burr, that, you know, somehow the Office of Rent Control and the conflation of the two departments into a landlord tenant, Office of Landlord Tenant Relations, then we'll make the modification accordingly.
Okay. And I get why they obviously are all...
The idea is, again, the economies of scale and the institutional knowledge, put them within one shop, and I think we can all gain from that.
So in serving in the Office of Rent Control Officer at this time, is that still with you? Okay.
It's me. But I plan on the promotion of the one person that's serving with me, and that's Ms. Ita Roman, who's doing a yeoman's job. And that's going to be inserted, that job description and budget item is going to be inserted in the 2023 budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, and I think just messaging is important, and by kind of eliminating control, which people had an issue with, you know, when we were doing the ordinance in the first place, and the stigma that some people still have with Section 8, I think if you eliminate that, and it's the Office on Landlord Tenant Relations, I think that works. And it will also serve as a central repository for the minutes and documents of our housing-related advisory boards and commissions. Okay? It would be one office that would house all of that. Yes, sir.
Would it make sense for... Would it make sense for a representative to start joining housing commission meetings? Because there's no, Ms. Tally sits in as, you know, for planning, but I'm wondering now if there's going to be the sort of broader Office of Housing, if there should be a staff liaison?
I guess as we progress.
Okay.
That it may be appropriate, because issues may come up that are actually, you know, associated with rent control.
Yeah, because they're ready to do research, and, you know, they could be an extension of the government.
That works. I think working the other way is looping the rent control office into that, between what you're doing now and as 2023 comes.
Yeah.
When I look for this to come to fruition.
You know, as that question was asked, Mr. Scannellberry, maybe it's, if you could put together, I think, a summary of it as updates in an email for us around these, because in looking through, I think we can then see which pieces are being touched upon, you know, with the different reporting relationships and flow charts, what that will look like, you know, when we look at the various management control pieces that are in place, and what would be put in place as any change, any efficiencies, as you note, certainly job descriptions, all those. I think there's categories there that we could get a running update from in a memo. And that way, we can look at it, and then to the council's point, we see attachment pieces with suggestions that we might say, hey, consider this, consider this. That's, I think, easier to operate from than just hearing stuff.
And you also, again, stole my thunder. Something is coming up here.
Okay. Well, if we're all stealing your thunder, you might have to get to the thunder a little quicker on these things.
I'm burying the thunder here. I've tracked down the employee handbook. It was completed by outside counsel in January of 2022. I have the version here. What I'm going to do is put it out for review and get it out and to disseminate it to the staff in January of 2023. Okay? It's been here. It's a year. It wasn't for whatever. But I have it here. I have the lined out version upstairs. I have the finalized version here. And I'm going to give it, whether it be our attorneys, distinguished attorneys over there, or I'm going to have the last set of eyes go on this in time to get it out for January 2023. This is our handbook.
Okay.
Another thing I'm looking to, and this is the thunder that you stole, Mayor, I planned on getting out in January on the website, org charts for not only the township, but every department within the township. That's going to be put on the website. That's going to be able to be disseminated, something we did at DOT. If you go to their website now, it still has it in there. Each department has an org chart, who does what and where, and it's not only good for us to know, but it's good for members of the public. They can go to a website, find out what department to go to. So I'm going to also have that done by January. I requested the QPA to investigate our record retention options with such concerns such as Iron Mountain, et cetera, in an effort to move our records management into the 21st century, as well as free up some space in 205 for more effective usage. I took a mini tour of what we call storage areas. And we could do better. We could do better. We haven't considered at this point in time any outside agencies or business such as Iron Mountain, et cetera. I would say over 25 years ago, I contracted with Iron Mountain, and at the time, I was with GHI, which is now Emblem Health, three warehouses, 12 million claims, and contracted with them. And you'd be surprised how quickly we were able to clean up and expedite our record retention. And they will give it to you however you want it. But it's something we need to look into. And especially for 205, clear mine, simply because if we can clear up some of the boxes of files, we have space that we can use more effectively and efficiently. We're clogging up buildings.
As you look at, as you look at Iron Mountain, having dealt with them for many years, they're very expensive, I will note, but we should institute timelines on our record retention policies, so anything scanned. But they will not automatically destroy unless you specifically noted, and they will keep charging you those fees, which all the storage space you're talking about here, we'd all be paying for forever. So we just have to make sure that we know what our retention policies are, and those documents are then destroyed appropriately, so we don't just keep paying for warehouses and warehouses of paper somewhere.
Right. And I just used Iron Mountain as an example. There are other concerns out there. And yes, I believe the clerk here retains our retention schedule, and that would be part and parcel of us being more aligned with it. So, and I'm correct in that. Okay. So, yes, I'm aware.
Madam Clerk, along those lines, what, we all got notice of your staffing pieces there. What's the status of filling the position that became open, and where's that at now?
Thank you, Mayor. I submitted the necessary paperwork to fill the vacancy on October 26. Haven't received a response.
I don't know what that means.
There's paperwork that needs to be submitted in order to post the job advertisement, so that you can fill the vacancy.
Submitted to who?
To the finance department. And management has a copy.
Okay. And that was October 26th?
Yes, sir.
To what? To post the position? That it's even open? And have we posted it yet?
It's been posted?
I have not received a response to post it.
Mr. Scannellberry, do you know if it's been posted?
I don't believe it's been posted.
Do you know why it wouldn't have been posted?
No, I didn't realize the date that it was sent forward. But usually, it comes through the department to finance or the manager. I don't remember signing off on the blue sheet to fill that position yet.
Well, fill it. It's a different story if there's a hire to be made. But I would say more importantly than that, we should post it that there's an opening. I know how long ago we all got that email, and all said, hey, we want to be in the loop on any openings there, and we want it filled as quick as possible, given especially how that interfaces with the public. So if there's a holdup or some reason why since October 25th, or whatever date you said to 26th, it hasn't still not been posted, we'd want to know what the holdup is and why.
Okay. I'll find out in the morning. Also, when it comes to the QPA and the jobs I've asked them to look into, and I spoke to Councilor Schlegler's concern about the fleet management, and I'm also asking him to look into that. I mean, it could be a third party to do that, but is it best practices that we're doing now? I tend to think not, but it's something that we're going to be looking into.
Thank you.
During my meeting with the directors, I've asked them to consider the electric vehicles, like I said earlier. And Ms. Scott Stello and Ms. Johnson jumped on that right away. So I'm pretty pleased with this. I have to be candid. I do feel, in meeting with the directors, they did voice a concern with being contacted directly by governing body members. And, you know, and they feel a certain way about that. So with all due respect, if, Conley, if we can go back to going through the manager's office, so I can contact the directors accordingly, and they could set their priorities accordingly, and not feel pressed to do something when they may have something on the hopper, I want them to be comfortable, and I want to get the best job out of them. And if this is a concern, they won't share it with you, but I'm sharing it. But if you would, just, let's go back to the old routine. I would appreciate that. It would help. Thank you. A couple more things. The fall planning, you probably know this, the fall planning season started today. Okay, we got that kicked off. You know, Midtown Deck opened. Initiuane pathway and the lights at Essex will be completed by the end of the construction period, weather permitting, obviously. And as far as that's concerned, I talked to Mr. Wood, and because of the delays, I've asked that he ensure that the contractors will now be subject to liquidation damages if there are any further delays. It's an option that we have, we should exercise. Okay? So the construction period is, as long as the weather permits, but there's been an assurance that if the weather stays like it is, the ground stays warm enough to dig into, that the pass at Initiuane and the lights at Essex will be done. That's all I have, Mayor. Questions?
Okay. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. Last week's meeting, there was a, when we discussed what was going to be on this agenda for tonight to vote on, there was a resolution about the 26 days vacation for department heads that I had some questions about, and it wasn't on the agenda tonight.
We asked that it be pulled until he's got more information for us, not to just put it back on.
So it didn't just go away? So you're still working on that?
Yeah.
Is it in the handbook?
As a matter of fact, I was running through the handbook when I received it, and I did run across that here. So it is addressed in the handbook.
So it's documented in the handbook that all department heads get 26 days vacation?
No, the 26 vacation days, actually, what I saw in that regard during what I'm doing now was carryover. Once I, again, once I go through this, I'll be able to better answer your questions. Or if you give me your questions specifically, I will refer to our current handbook and give you a current answer.
Okay.
So if you email me with your questions, I'll go through page one until...
Fine. But what happened to that ordinance, that resolution?
I got...
It's just going to be table for...
Yeah, I think, as the mayor has stated, that was being tabled, and so more information came from the...
More information came from the manager on what this, you know, where it came from, where the 26 days came from, and what the policy was and procedure are. And he would discuss that. And if it needed to be further, carried further for a vote, then it would be.
So at this moment in time, what are those vacation days that those department heads receive?
To my understanding, the department heads are receiving 26 days of vacation time.
So basically, the resolution was just to make it official?
Was to amend the code, amend the code so that was consistent with, amend the code so it was consistent with the policy.
So basically, there's nothing to talk about. They all get 26 days. Yes or no?
That's the manager's, that's within the manager's priority or...
But they already get it.
Yeah.
So it's a moot point. So that's it. That's the end of it. Okay. Thank you.
I would say yes.
Yes.
And carrying it over is also the management. You can carry it up to a year, 26, over. I think I saw that here. Once again, I'll try to get a confirmation for you, and...
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
A couple of other things I'll note. Well, as we're talking HR-type pieces, Mr. Scannellberry, I would just say also, as you noted in one of your comments before, if you could always just shoot us all, if you're out of state or out of office memo, like we used to receive previously, just so we know, and we have that as well. It's important, I would say to my colleagues, I know we've received a full listing of all engineering services we've approved tonight through the end of the year, but review, we received all of them, all of us, so check them out. We will have a decision to make. We should probably do it a little advance at the end of the year, calendar year. Okay? That's that one. I'll go down the line for any comments. Let's just go, let's just go this way, if there are any. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll start with you.
Absolutely not. It's 10:20.
Okay. Councilman Schlegler.
I have nothing to say.
Councilman Yefnos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm good.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thanks, Mary. Nothing from me.
Councilman Cummings?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure. I presented some takeaways from a couple of the community meetings I had, because there have come some decisions that I think we, the public wants from us. One, it's clear that there is a requirement or request that we have an independent traffic study done, not one from Mr. Plasic or our own staff that Ms. Tally. I want an independent firm to do a traffic study, especially with our latest changes to that area. The other question or concern, Mr. Plasic would not confirm whether grocery store, whether grocery store would have free parking. His immediate question was, since he said it's a national chain, does any other location of this chain have paid parking? Does any other location of this chain have only garage parking? I'm sharing this because these are things, I know you guys are having a meeting on the 29th. I believe Mr. Plasic may be there. I don't know, because I didn't know about the meeting, but that's near here or there. The other thing is the scaled model that I think some of us may have seen be developed and shown, that people can see that, to give them an example of what it does, because the charts and the redevelopment plan itself really does not do justice. I think those who have seen that, we agree to that. The other question, and I think I've made that pretty clear, is that the idea that the grocery store is going to be there is a very important development part of this process. But I again implore that the council be very alarmed to the fact that, you know, the people who live there are, also be considered. To that end, excuse me, Robin, to that end, I'll be meeting with residents of the Muse Complex, the Matthew Carter Apartments, and as well as the Pine Ridge Apartments. And again, all of you guys will be invited to attend, to hear from the individuals who live in those places. That is it for me, other than, again, Sandy Lang's viewing. Wake is Thursday, November 6, at Martin's Funeral Home, from 6 to 8. And her homegoing is on Friday, November 18th, 11:00 a.m., at Trinity on the corner of Orange Road and High Street.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
Madam Attorney?
Nothing. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll just simply say, as a reminder, as Mr. Cummings just said, Councilman Cummings, and as been noted earlier, will be in at the Lackawanna Development Meeting on the 29th, 6:45, 7 o'clock, sorry, at the Hillside Elementary School. And certainly, we hope everyone attends that as well. Continue to get more information. As the councilman noted, this is the window for everybody to get more information, submit questions, as you just heard him presenting a number of them there. That way, we capture all of these and bring them forward in the conversation. So thank you very much on that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I am.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.